Oh, my sunblock.
The advisor.
All right, at 5:30, let's call the meeting to order. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You got a roll call?
Steve Hearn, here. Carol Hunkam, here. Jay Jones, here. Lexi Murphy, here. Jeanne Earl, here.
Okay, that's everyone in attendance, so we have a quorum. Did you get out a sign-up sheet for guests?
No, I didn't.
Okay, we do not have a guest sign-up sheet, but I believe I can identify all of you, so we will get you written down. We need a motion to approve tonight's agenda unless there are additions or revisions to that, and none that have been reported. Where do you, Scott, have it? Any change? I don't know what else to change.
I do have a question about that, though.
Question?
February 21st, we introduced a resolution to set a public hearing for the Budget Amendment at 5:30, March 2023.
It is not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
Correct. Correct. It does not need to be done before the regular agenda, before the regular budget. I was misinformed and thought it had to be done before that, which is why I said earlier. So it does not need to be done. That doesn't actually have to be certified until, to the county, until May 31st. So that actually is longer than the budget by a month, but so it was not necessary to have it done before April 23rd.
Budget amendments, May 31st?
May 31st.
This is the deadline.
That's fiscal year, yeah. What is the action? Okay, never mind. I'll wait. The other one is April 30th for the budget.
You got an extra month.
Yeah.
Are we going to be talking about that?
Yeah, April 30th.
Here?
I know, but are we going to be talking about them?
Yes. You have all your submitted ones, except for the city water, sewer, and electric budgets, but you have all the other ones.
I was gone at that meeting.
But you have all of their submissions?
Yeah, you have all of their submissions. I just got this piece of paper. I hope that I ever got a packet before I left on vacation when you guys talked about it.
When they presented all those budgets?
I can double-check at home, but.
Yeah, everybody should have got the same thing.
Yeah, because I wasn't here either.
Yeah, we were both gone.
But I got them, so.
Okay.
Well, then we can have another copy of it.
Yeah.
Or in paper airplanes in your yards.
Yeah. But we'll give you that.
They don't got it.
So, yeah, that's why that's not on there. See if that answers that question. Any other questions regarding tonight's agenda? Last we need a motion to approve to move forward. I'll make the motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Carol.
I'll second.
To approve the agenda as noted. Do we have any further discussion? More questions related to the budget, or to budget, to the budget either, but to the agenda or any items that are not on the agenda? Okay, you're in, and we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the agenda as stated tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I heard all ayes. Motion carries. Agenda as follows. Open up, Cindy, to address the council. We have Glenda and Sean.
I'm observing tonight.
You are observing tonight? Okay. Sean, are you here to speak?
I'm here to observe.
You are also observing. Tammy, you are speaking on the agenda. Chamber room item. And Matt, you're here for your report or any other comment?
I'm here for questions and as a representative.
Oh, okay. Fair enough. And Kent, I know you're on the agenda. Do you have another item? And you're here as the press, correct?
Yes, and I just was wondering, I've got a few questions of some of the agenda items. Is it possible for me to be able to ask any questions that remain with me after council has discussions at the end of the meeting?
Did you get your agenda on Friday?
Yeah.
And today? Were there these questions you wanted to ask of Scott or Michelle or Kelly?
Well, I want to hear your discussion, and maybe my questions will be answered, but if they're not, could I ask them at the end of the meeting?
If you need clarification on an agenda, on something that's happened during the meeting, my understanding is the press is supposed to speak to the person directly and ask them of that after the meeting, not during a meeting. Is that correct?
It's however the mayor wants to run it.
We usually have them long enough without more questions, so if you have direct questions you could ask after the meeting. If that's accepted with everyone else, I think that makes the most sense. So there's no other open community comments? Okay, we will now need a motion to open the public hearing for the fiscal year 24 max levy. Someone would like to make that motion to open that.
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing for max levy fiscal year 24.
Okay, you just made the motion to open it. Need a second? I'll second. Second by Carol. It is open at 5:36 PM. Did we receive any written or objections or comments or questions related to the public hearing? And no one here has anything to say regarding that information? Okay. Then we will take a, well, we forgot to say all ayes. Sorry, all in favor of opening the public hearing for the fiscal year max levy, fiscal year 24 max levy, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, it is open. I'm sorry, it still isn't 5:36, and we have had no objections or anything filed in writing or by in-person.
What is the negative 3.49?
That is your, the difference from last year's, it's went down from last year, your annual change. And that's due to the reduced valuation. So you lost from 32 to 29 on the valuation due to commercial rollback.
So the lower taxable value by 3.3 million, where did that number come from?
The budget year effective property tax, the top number, regular, that's the county provides that. That's your property tax valuation. The 32,714 and the 29,423, those come automatically from the county. We can't adjust that. That's our A-10 levy, the max 8.10 percentage.
The current year certified property tax, that's what we're looking at, right?
Yeah. And so the A-10 levy on that is the number below, your regular general becomes that.
That 264,987.
Correct.
Isn't that the dollars you'll raise from the A-10 levy?
From the max A-10. So that is income from that levy, based on that valuation. And then the other ones down the way are your, the other levies that you can provide based on the value. We do part of the insurance cost through that levy. The emergency levy is a 27 cents per 1,000, sorry, per 1,000. So that's why that one is lower as well, because the valuation is lower. That's a 27 cents. And then if I get an high-person employee benefits, they're all related to your, your So each of those categories are estimated at 10% higher right now, and that still gives you the lower compared to last year annual change total tax levy of the negative 3.3.
So the 3.9 comes from the certified last year, current year budget taxable valuation, and then the budget year, the year that you're proposing a budget is 29 million in taxable valuation. That's where the 3.3 million is coming from?
Is that, you're talking about the difference between 32.7 and 29.4? That's the 3.3. Yes, that's due to the commercial rollback. It was at 90%, now it's down to 50%. So your value has dropped on all commercial properties. That's from the state. We don't, we don't set those numbers.
No, I know.
All right, so they are just automatically generated, and as is, then the A-10 levy below it is.
So you're talking year over year, you're not talking about the change that the state did, are you?
The negative 3.49?
The 3.3 million, that's just from what they valued for taxable last year versus not what they originally valued this, for the coming year, but what they changed it to.
This includes that change, which is why it is over.
Yeah. So it's after the change.
It's after the change, correct.
Right.
Because we didn't do this in advance, knowing that the legislation was still in flux until that was now finalized, which is why they, many of counties have had to do an extra hearing for that because of change. And they lost money.
Well, everybody's lower.
Exactly.
And actually, the original valuations for this year were going to be lower than on, for next year were going to be lower than this year anyway. But they lowered it more because of an error. So the change from year over year, not because of that error, is 3.3 million. Is that what you're saying?
I'm not sure I'm clear on what you're asking, but these numbers are set from the county, and it is the latest, including the rollback error, valuation.
Thank you.
Otherwise Barb in the county auditor's office would be happy to verify that with you.
Thank you.
Or explain it better than I do. Since she was in assistance during this process. Okay? So Steve, did you get the math to work out on your A-10 and your 27 cents?
So, yeah, well, if you subtract, I guess that's what I was kind of asking, the same question as she was. If you subtract that, the current year and to the budget year, and I come up with 3291. So that would be your 3.3. So my other question is, the max, I mean, if you look at the first slide in the explanation, it says max levy steps needed before budget amendments approval.
Which is what I was talking about, why we don't have that budget amendment to change. This has to happen before your new year. It doesn't have to happen. Well, it had to happen because of the date, so we had to have it filed by, the max levy has to go first, and then more budget amendments and new budget for the next year.
Yeah, but we're not doing budget amendments for next year. We're doing if there's any budget amendments this year.
Right. That's why you have longer than the actual budget, because that's why you have until May.
Yeah, I understand that. But the budget, any budget amendment can be done anytime throughout the year.
Correct, and we've already had two, one, we already have one.
One, I think.
On file.
So, I guess, yeah, the wording on that is just, doesn't make sense to me, because they're, they're not related. The max tax levy steps is not related to the budget amendments, but I get what you're saying.
And schedule.
Yeah.
And that was just my notes for you. If you had questions, you can ask on how that's worded, but that's not really anything that has to do with approval or getting it certified. Any other comments from council related to that? Otherwise, we can take the motion to close the public hearing. I'll make the motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Carol.
I'll second.
Second by Jay. Close the public hearing. Any objections to that? Otherwise, all in favor of closing the public hearing, approximately 5:45, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public hearing closes at 5:45 PM. Given the fact there were no objections raised or corrections needed at this point, your resolution to approve the fiscal year max levy needs to be made next. The second part of that is the max property dollars, which is on that as well. The 392,768 is on the second to last, second to last column, the second to last entry. That's where that number comes from, and that just sets your max. Again, it's all set and determined by calculations provided by the county. I'm on the spot, I want to remember right here. Second to third pages.
So we need to do a resolution to approve?
To approve. Max levy as published and provided more in public hearing.
And we have to do that, I could approve the max levy?
Correct.
There's nothing to read over there?
No, I just love to. She always has to read.
No, yeah, say you usually make.
I'll introduce the motion, or for resolution to approve the fiscal year 24 max levy.
I'll second it. That is a motion by Jeanne, and a second by Carol. With resolution to approve fiscal year 24 max proposed property tax levy as published and stated, do we have any other further discussion or dissent? Otherwise, a call for a roll call vote?
All right. Steve Hearn.
Aye.
Carol Hunkam.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Jeanne Earl.
Aye.
All ayes present. Resolution passes. And now the second part of the max levy is the resolution to approve the max property tax dollars for the effective tax levies fiscal year 2024 shall not exceed 392,768. Again, did everyone find that amount on the worksheet that I wrote for the max levy statement?
I'll make a motion, a resolution to approve the max property tax dollars for the effective tax levies fiscal year 24 not to exceed 392,768 dollars.
I'll second. Another motion by Jeanne, and a second by Lexi. Approve the resolution as listed for the max property dollars available to be levied in fiscal year 2024. Do we have any other clarification needed? And a call for a roll call vote?
Steve Hearn.
Aye.
Carol Hunkam.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Jeanne Earl.
Aye.
All ayes. Resolution passes. Okay, we're item number 10. Kent is here to finish updating us on the property and liability insurance coverage for coming year.
Okay, okay. So on the first page here, property is first, blanket coverage. So what they do is they take all the buildings that are on replacement cost, put them under a blanket. So let's just say, is this building tornado, fire, that type of thing comes through, you would have full replacement coverage up to the 14 million on this building, or any other building in the city, and that would be your total amount if there was a tornado that came through, wiped out all the buildings, that would cover all of them. So currently, we're at 100% replacement costs, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that a little later. So general liability is $2 million, so it'd be kind of your slip and fall, that type of thing. Crime, employee theft is $150,000. Auto liability is $2 million. Linebacker, which is you guys, if you make a decision somebody doesn't like and you get sued, you have $2 million of coverage there. Law enforcement would be $2 million. And then on top of that, all that liability, we have an umbrella policy for $1 million. So we actually would end up with $3 million total in the event of a lawsuit. And then we have workers' comp as well. Second page, if you go to that. This is kind of a comparison of premiums from last year to this year. The big increase is the property, increasing for two reasons. The values went up mainly because of inflation, and then also the premium per thousand went up as well. Liability, a little bit of an increase there. Inland reeds, about the same, little increase on the auto. Work comp is almost identical. Linebacker is a little increase there. Government crime is exactly the same. Law enforcement is down just a little. The umbrella's about the same. And the net amount, you're up, obviously, for the year. Main reason, auto and the property. One thing you can do for that blanket coverage, we could go from 100% of that blanket coverage, that 14 million, we could drop it down to 90% if you're interested, okay? So instead of having 14 million, you'd have 90% of that 14 million for any building. I think you'd be safe there for, that would be for your, your total blanket coverage. I don't know of any building that would come that much, and it would save you $1,400 per year for, I don't think, a lot of risk. Another option would be, right now, you're at a $2,500 deductible. If you go up to $5,000 deductible, so it'd be for each claim, you'd risk another $2,500 and take that 90%, it would save you almost $5,000 per year. So you'd have to, to break even, you'd have to have two claims per year just to break even. That is, that's a lot higher than your average by far. So on a normal year, you would actually benefit from that. I don't know what your thoughts are there, if you're open to that. The disadvantage is you pay another $2,500 in the event of a claim, but you're also saving $5,000 for the premium on the year.
Didn't we do something like this last year?
You did. So last year, you were at $1,000. We raised it to 2,500, and we saved about that 2,500 then. So I don't know if we're a little early on this, or, I don't know. I thought that premium on the property went up, and I was looking for options for you. So it's up to you if you, and you don't need to do it tonight, you can do it anytime during the year, it would just be prorated. So if you did it halfway through the year, you'd save half that. So don't feel like you're rushed or anything like that, so.
And when, do we have to make a discussion about this, tonight?
No, no, you can do it anytime you want to.
Anytime, okay.
Yep, yep.
Just a question, Kent, on this, for the property, the blanket coverage?
Yep.
Does that cover contents also, or is that just a building?
Building and contents.
But last year, our deductible had been $1,000. We raised it to $3.5.
It was $1,000, we raised it to 2,500. So within two years, we're going from $1,000 to $5,000, so that is a little bit of an increase there, so.
Do you know, was there any, anything turned in last year?
No. No, no. In fact, for a few years, there hasn't been anything. Yeah.
Then it would be nice to save.
Well, yeah, yep. We had a crystal ball and knew exactly what was happening this coming year, then we know what to do, but, yeah.
And you don't have that either?
I do not, no, no. While you're thinking about that, if you go to page three, last time we met, we were talking about fire departments, vehicles. So here is a list of the vehicles that we have changed from actual cash value, so what they're worth at the time of loss, to replacement value. And I think there's six of them there. And then one of them that was on the list was the 90 International Tanker. That is still the way it was, because it's over the 20-year period, so we did not make a change there to that, so.
Has the city, like, has Kelly Metwood give you anything for them yet, or no?
No.
No, all right.
No.
And how about the ambulance? Are we doing replacement value on that one, too?
Yeah, the '09 ambulance is at replacement. That's the fourth one down.
Yeah, but that, so that's the one we have.
That's his truck, or his command truck, though.
His command truck.
Okay. The 20, so you need the 2013 ambulance.
Yeah, and I think the last time Scott and I talked, we were going to get that information, but as of today, we don't have it yet, so.
You should have it. I emailed it to you on Friday.
Oh, okay. Then I'll look in my junk then, yeah.
You want to replace it, right?
Yeah. Okay.
And if you're still here at the end of the meeting, I can, I can bring it up and print it off for you if you want it then, too, so.
Okay, okay. Or I can stop by tomorrow and get it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I did not get that email, so, yeah, I'm glad you said so.
Decisions to make, yes? Can I talk about it?
That '09 PSS ambulance, that probably makes replacement cost a lot more than it is the cost of the truck.
So, to explain all, it's not, I mean, it's replacement cost, but it's not, we've assessed them a value. So all the values that Kent was given is the assessed value, like, to buy.
So all the values that Kent was given is the assessed value, like, to buy another similar vehicle to that. So it's not, I mean, the only one that has all replacement value right now is our brand new truck. So that's the, otherwise, all the rest of them have assessed value. So, yeah, I, that doesn't, that it's called the ambulance, that doesn't mean anything, because it has an assessed value.
And then the only other thing we gotta get to you is, like, all the stuff that Kelly and I have.
Yes, yep, 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 correct.
The city has the list?
Yes, that's covered, too.
Okay, anyone else have anything for Kent? So do we need to wait then before we actually approve? We don't have your stuff down here yet, or where are we at with that?
No, no, those will just be a change, that won't be a problem.
Okay.
Yep, yep, yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kent.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Kent. All right, item 11 is the planning chamber to provide an update on Easter events. Saturday, April 8th at the City Park.
So I'm just gonna, just give you a short update on what we're gonna do. It is our simplest event that we have, so. And we're going to have, similar to last year, we'll have Easter Bunny come and allow the kids to take pictures and get hugs from the Easter Bunny again. And we are going to have the Easter egg hunt. Hopefully, if it's not too wet and mushy out there, we'll have the Easter egg hunt again. And then we will be having the petting zoo again. That one was really good with the kids last year. They loved that. So we're bringing that back. I guess that's the biggest thing, just to make sure that you all are good with that, having that out there. I mean, they have the pens and everything, so they keep everything contained and stuff. But that's probably the biggest thing. The firemen will be there again to give you the rides, who they love, too. And then we'll have prizes and stuff, too, for the Easter egg hunt with a golden prize at the end. And everyone will get a goodie basket or a goodie bag at the end also. So that's pretty much it. Do you guys have any questions from me?
What time does it start?
Starts at 10:00 AM, and it goes to 11:30. We kind of coordinate that with the other towns, so that parents can go to the other towns' children.
Do you need streets or anything blocked off, or?
I don't, I don't, Brian, did we have streets blocked off for you guys for the fire department last year?
You guys can do whatever you want, that doesn't, doesn't make, make us the difference.
I think they did last year.
No, I don't, I don't remember we, we had.
Any questions more for Sammy? Cover biggie nuts soon with the, with the reach. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Sammy.
Thanks.
All right, item 12, approved minutes from 3/6 and 3/14 meetings. Put it in your packet, yes. Did we find anything that was misappropriated to your motion or second, or someone's name spelled wrong? There's no dates.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes for 3/6 and 3/14 meetings.
All right, we've got a motion by Lexi. She approved the minutes as listed, 3/6 regular and 3/14 special. Do we have any support or a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, do we have any questions or clarifications needed prior to calling for a vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving minutes from 3/6 regulars meeting, the 3/6 regular meeting and the 3/14 special meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All eyes. Motion carrying, minutes approved. Payment of claims is item 13 on our agenda. It's in purple in your packet. Any other questions?
On the fire protection, it says the ENC Insurance Company's late fee, did we just done that in late, or?
Shouldn't ask that. Did you read through that one, or do you know what that is? Because the one is on ambulance, too. Yeah, so it's for 20 bucks.
I think they were $22.
And then each one is what you're showing.
Okay.
Both the ENC, so.
Yeah, I don't, I would have to, I'd have to double check that.
And the Missouri River, that's just, is that our natural 32,000 commodity for sale? That gets, that come out of the bank?
Pay.
Yeah.
It's you, it's out of the bank.
Questions related to claims report, otherwise.
I'll make the motion to approve the claims for this evening.
Please make the motion to approve payment of claims. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Jean, second by Carol, to approve payment of claims as noted on the claims report provided in your packet. Do we have any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of payment of claims, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All eyes, motion carries, and approved. All right, item 14 is to approve the request for planting five new evergreens at Swanson. This was provided to previously, and you'd asked for a couple of different things. We got some of those things back from Heath. He was not really able to find or to get another quote. He got ground effects, which is in Sioux Center. I think the other night he knew of to ask was also in Sioux Center, and he assumed they would have a similar amount. It's five-foot black billed spruce. And those are the, and he shows you, it is a little hard to see there, and they're in kind of the right field. If you're close, and if anybody's driven by, it's pretty obvious where the gaps are there, but that's the ones to get in there. And, yeah. So you have that information. And the school board has already approved their half of it, so it would be the $1,000 is your only other outside request, other than the $7,000 budget.
Where's this budget into this year, into our budget?
It's on this year's bill for fifth to year 24. But we have, right, so it will be starting in the July one, essentially, but. Because I don't know that you, what you paid that of last year, when he had bills for that top dressing room, when all that got paid, which one, but we can find out.
So the school board has approved this $1,000?
Did approve their share, yeah, previously, so.
And they're looking at five, five-foot trees?
Yeah. It'll take a while to catch up, to kill these. They're all pretty big. And we talked about how we should maybe be looking at, we all should be looking at planting another row, essentially, behind there to start growing them up, because the two that have, two rows there are pretty high. Said he can do that pretty much everywhere, except behind baseball, there's not quite enough room around center field. They wouldn't quite be able to get another row sit in before the property boundary, but. But that would be another, a little bit larger investment, obviously, but you gotta plan ahead if you want something to block here from the north. That's two spots.
What is our, I mean, what is our cost here? Don't we have, don't we do some for maintenance, or?
$7,000 is your regular budgeted amount.
$7,000.
You each have seven, yeah.
Yep.
And that usually covers all the, the regular stuff, and then we pay the first thousand of water.
Yep.
So our budget includes that. And then anything over that, they pay, up to the next thousand, and then after that. Did I say that wrong?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we cover, yes, sorry, they pay the first thousand, and we are on, we have budgeted the second thousand, but usually it ends up being about $700. In the past, it's been our shared part, and we can determine that. And if it would go, and then if it would go over the our thousand as well, then you would shut them off or whatever. But by then, the season's usually over, and perhaps it's, we take pretty good care of it, yeah.
And then plus, we pay the, the $7,000 doesn't include the two guys, so that would work it.
Yeah, it does.
It does, so, yeah.
That's what I can remember.
So this thousand will be over above that $7,000.
Yeah, do you have that in your bucket, in that budget, packet, at Swanson?
Yep.
Grab that, if you guys even remember that. It should be in your budget packet, his three lists everything now. So it looks like in the past, it's been, has that regular, that's sort of the operational maintenance, spying the top dressing, all that, and chalk and things, and then he has one bigger project, I mean, whether it's updating the bathroom, he painted the bathrooms one year or two years ago or something, and then there's the top dressing stall last year.
Last year, we bought the retainer wall.
Yeah, to, so he could scoop in and get it. And that was outside of his budget, so that's kind of how, I guess, it looks like you guys have done that in the past, is. There's always one kind of project on the radar that's not really a part of that same operational budget.
And he had purchases before, he had purchases out of this year's budget yet, or will be next fiscal budget?
Probably would have to, they'll probably build before. They have to be in dirty, so, yeah, this part will come out. Like I said, I did, we have to look into, see whatever, ever the top dressing stall cost came out of, whether that, I assume that was done about the same time of year, so it must always be that part, so it's always a year outside of that, right?
Because he's not gonna want to plant a lot.
Yeah, too late.
Right, that's too late.
And he just wanted to get on their agenda, or get on their schedule, I guess, to make sure they have time to move them and put them in. I think they start their April 15-ish or something, they start practice, so. Motion for any action?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the request for, for, what, $1,000 or whatever, for planting five new trees at the ballpark.
Okay, then a motion by Jay to approve their request.
That's up to $1,000, no more than that? Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah.
It's a two-way split.
Is there five footers or previous ice tree?
It should be nice.
I'll second that.
And then a motion by Jay, and a second by Jean, to approve and request to plant the five new evergreens, splitting the cost of up to $2,000 total with South O'Brien. Do we have any other further questions related to this request? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the request for planting five new evergreens at Swanson, sharing the cost with South O'Brien with a $1,000 limit to the city, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All eyes, motion carries, request approved. Do we have a vote on that tonight or tomorrow? Okay, item 15 is the readings for the ordinance amending Article 1.05 Municipal Electric Utility Rates, increase rates per the overall 5% recommended by 2022 MRES rate study, which includes reducing the power cost adjustment base and raising customer charges/rates, which was provided previously, and, you know, I think we adopted all of that, right?
Did you ever find, find anything when somebody came in at the last meeting about the rates, like, the?
I did, and he was gonna update that in his report.
Oh, okay, go ahead, that's painful.
Yeah, I just got that figured out, to share. So this is the official version there, it won't make you read all the rates or anything, but.
You didn't, man.
We have not heard, we have not received any written or oral complaints or concerns.
Is this a resolution or just a?
This is a, yeah, reading of the ordinance amending, and ordinance.
I moved that we approve the second reading and waive the third reading of the ordinance amending Article 1.05 of municipal utility rates.
Okay, Jay has made the motion to consider tonight the second reading and waiving the third reading. Does that motion have support?
I'll second.
Second by Carol. Okay, now we've got a motion and a second related to the calling tonight the second reading of the ordinance and waiving the third reading of the ordinance amending Article 1.05 Municipal Electric Utility Rates. Is there any further discussion from council? As we'll call for a roll call vote.
Steve Earn.
Aye.
Carol Hunkell.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
And Jean Naro.
Aye.
All eyes. Ordinance amended. Okay, so item 16 on the agenda is in similar vein. Tonight is the second reading of the ordinance amending the Chapter 5 Trees, Article 7 General Provisions. 7.03 Planting Restrictions to Prevent the Planting of Any Trees in the Street or Parking. Have we received any written or?
I've not received any.
I moved that, so, go ahead.
No, okay, I moved that we approve, or, I mean, I, I approve that we do the second reading and waive the third of the ordinance, chapters, five trees, article.
Okay. We've had a motion by Lexi and a second by Jay. To consider tonight the second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 5 Trees, Article 7 General Provisions, 7.03 Planting Restrictions to Prevent the Planting of Any Trees in the Street or Parking, and as well as waiving the third reading. Do I have any other discussion related to this agenda item?
Would you welcome a question or clarification?
Yes.
How would that apply to the boulevards?
Boulevard's just city property, so that's.
So I just didn't know, this was such a broad term, that that might prevent replanting of the boulevards by the city itself?
I don't think it quite refers to that, but. I know some people went like that anyway, but that's not what we're trying to do, no.
Okay, it's fine.
This is just, right now, there's a list of trees that are not allowed, and instead of continuing to add to the list of trees, including the ash tree and whatever else might come up in the future. This, for the time being, is what many cities are choosing to do. Okay? So we've had the second, and considering the second and waiving the third reading, we've had all a motion and a second. We've had discussion. We're ready, we call for a roll call vote. Everybody ready for that? Yes?
Steve Earn.
Aye.
Carol Hunkell.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Jean Naro.
Aye.
All right, all eyes. Second and third reading of the ordinance amending trees in the boulevard, not the boulevard, in the parking and street. Now you got me saying it. Approved, approved, okay. Item 17 is to approve the purchase of a refurbished 1999 GMC Water Tender using township funds, and we have your materials in here from Ryan, and I'm sure he could further enlighten us on that, but. Anyone has any questions for him that they haven't asked previously, or hopefully they did? The other half of the cost is shared by the fire department's foundation funds, correct?
It's not really a foundation, it's a nonprofit.
Right, sorry, didn't use the right word, the nonprofit. This will replace German Towns.
Yes, this will replace it.
So, it's actually bigger than German Towns truck. So to explain some of the reasoning we do, are doing this, that truck is thirty-three years old and when it became a water tender, it was a used chassis to start with. So right now, NFPA is recommending a twenty-year cycle law or well beyond that and there's repair issues that are just not cost prohibitive to keep moving on with that truck. So I'm dancing a very delicate dance here because yes, I realize we have a fire station slash ambulance slash police department project coming up. So with all of that in mind, I'm trying to find the most economical way to get us where we need to go because even with that coming up, we have to be mindful with our fleet of trucks and making sure we can get to our emergencies that we need to get to.
I'll make the motion that we approve the 1999 GMC water tender. Motion by Lexi to approve. And a second by Jay. Do we have any other questions Ryan can answer related to this request? How old is the one at German Town, did you say?
Nineteen ninety.
That's a new.
Yeah, so we are, yes, we are not jumping up a lot in years, but very, I mean, that one has three, I think almost three hundred thousand miles on it and then we're having tank issues also. So this is what's nice about this new truck, it's a poly tank and aluminum box, so we can just reach chassis down the line.
Is it bigger too than the one you had?
And it's bigger.
What are you going to do with the old one?
Yeah, so the old one goes back to Caldwellia Township.
It's a town. It's always been there.
Yeah, that, that was part of the agreement.
Okay.
So if that truck would ever get replaced, that would go back to the township. They've always owned it.
And those township, I think it's kind of...
Caldwellia.
Do you know if I can send two checks in, one from here?
I'm sure we can.
Okay, I would think so too, but if anything changes, let... Scott know? Okay, we have a motion and a second, we have discussion. If there is any, here is no other discussion, we will move to a vote. All in favor of purchasing the refurbished 1999 GMC water tender using township funds, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carried, purchase approved. After that. Okay. Okay, two reports. We have plenty to report, lots of happening. One is that the Black Hills Energy franchise fee dollars have been received and we've already had a cycle of that and I think any day now, we should get to the next month's dollars. They were sitting here too, I think they were like fourteen, seventeen hundred dollars. Came into that fund and remember that revenue.
Think we've received two.
Now we've got the second one now. So that is working as intended and the revenue purpose statement that you agreed to was about, I can't remember, ninety percent, yeah, some, twenty-five percent was for property tax relief and the remaining value was to be spent as you determine, so once that funds build something up, we will have something there for that to be used in budgeting, but just getting going now. We have the, we have, I'm not going to steal your, you have a lot of those to say and he's going to get... Kelly, I'll just let you say all the rest of that stuff.
That's fine.
Go ahead.
Yeah, for the superintendent, Kelly's out tonight, but what the guys have been doing here last couple of weeks. Service the wheel loader, changed oil and blowers at the, at the blower shed, removed branches hanging by Eric Cum's house and Marty Weber's house, drawdown at the wells, filled hole in front of the post office with crushed concrete, took pos to KT for the four corner flowers, waxed and detailed pickup trucks, manganese samples to Cherokee for testing, installed new hitch on electric truck, water reports, sanded intersections, serviced the Atlas air compressor, plowed snow, red meters, re-red meters, loaded piles of snow downtown, installed deck system on water truck, fixed plow jack, started lead inventory report, cleaned the shops, worked on hydraulic tools, met with John Deere, worked on West lift station, dug a grave and then filled the grave on Saturday. Josh is waiting for DNR to contact him for upcoming water test. Signed, Rich and Josh are both up for water classes at Cherokee on April thirteenth, four thirteen and then four twenty-one. Classes will be Thursday and Friday from eight thirty to four. And then also, weather permitting, by the end of the week, they do have two, two pallets of pothole patch, so I'll be able to start filling some of the potholes in town. And again, weather permitting and, and then also picking up some of the, some of the branches that have been laying while the snow's melting now, so they're starting to show up again, all the limbs from back in December when we had those, those rain and ice storms. Yep, and then I know there's been concern with, down on Maple Street with the, with the detour coming here at the end of the month. I have spoken with DOT, they do have signs that we can bring. They do advise against putting a stop sign. They said that's just going to cause problems if they put a stop sign there. Yeah, I do have called, spoke with a guy on Friday, he called back this morning and then I've got another number to call, so we can get signs lined up and see what they suggest for that. At the bank, the water damage that we had down there, like what Kent was saying, we have a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible and with steamway carpets, Ryan's bill came at just under two thousand dollars. So by the time we figure the time the guys put in down there, some of the parts they, with the water lines, we're not going to have a claim to turn in there. It's going to be pushing, pushing the twenty-five hundred and so on, won't even be worth filing for that, so. Just a heads up on that. And then also the utility billing, I know, spoke with Carol a little bit this afternoon. She spoke with Carol up in Prungar and there is, is a formula with our current billing system, there's a formula or part of the program anyway, we can adjust for the electrical on there. And I don't know if you can explain that, Carol, where Carol and Sarah were going to help.
She said there's a little place that you can go in and it sounds like you can put the months that it should have been done and that will figure out for each customer what they should have gotten, they'll get for credit. I just want to make sure that we can do it with this month's bill. That we can do both, so, in the same billing. So, and I did, I never thought of asking her that, but she said it was not, they've done it already. They forgot it last year or whatever and so it, she said it happens. So, so it sounds like we can do it.
Any other on the list?
Nope, that's all I have.
And Nate? Back to you, Ryan.
I don't have a whole lot other to say. One thing that I would, I guess, mention is the property blanket coverage. I can't said that fourteen million. I think we need to get true evaluation on our buildings and then look at our equipment that's stored in that building to make sure. Cause yeah, fourteen million seems like a huge number, but you take that big city building and all the equipment that sits in it, that fourteen million could disappear real quick, so. So yeah, I, I mean, if we're going through all the work to make everything right on other things, we might, well, just spend a little bit more time and get everything correctly instead of
Sounds good.
shooting from the hip and hoping we're good. Nothing worse than not having...
Enough.
Enough. And I, I mean, I, I understand it's money and we, we have to watch something, but... Yeah.
Anyone else, there's any new information from Lori or the ambulance sharing tonight?
No, I talked a little bit to Sherry this morning, but she said she would visit with us when Lori was gone, but she doesn't really like working with budgets, she said real well, so. I did remind her that, asked her about if some of the ambulance people that have, are no longer working, if we get money back from any of their payments of their classes, but the ones that have not, that are no longer working were like nurses or like Eric Brown or some of that we never paid for. So, and did suggest that means they've had a few that they lost, that they should maybe try to start recruiting again. And also reminded them about the April fifteenth grant that they can submit if they have something they're interested in getting rather than using county dollars or city dollars, I mean. And so, other than that, I have not re-talked to Lori yet about going over the budget again or not, so. And I think Jean and I are going to try to meet with Matt tomorrow, is it tomorrow? Wednesday. And, um...
Not all night or?
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night?
Like around five, did we say?
Yeah.
Does that work for you?
In the afternoon?
Yes, they do thus.
You can do earlier in the afternoon, we just gotta...
You want to do, you can...
So we can do like one or...
Would you rather do that? I, I just talked to him tonight.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me, we can talk when we're done.
Yeah.
All right, do we have anything, Matt, would you like to share?
Just thanks to Scott and Michelle for their patience, that they've been needing it. Let's figure things out together. Just library things, you've got a good uptick in circulation in February, even though we had a lot of snow. And on that lovely note, we're really happy for the city guys, for all the snow they've moved for us and even removing our ice pond behind the library, we really appreciate that. And then, yeah, we're still learning all the things that we have to figure out for our cooperation, but it's coming together and looking forward to our meeting on Wednesday.
Okay. Have any committee meetings in late? We talked about them, but we have not had any scheduled, I know of, but if anyone has any council comments, now is that time as well, and is forgetting someone else?
I have two.
Okay.
I would like, I guess it has to be, I talked to Scott about this last week. I guess it has to be a council decision. I would like to move or add, I guess we can leave it one up there and put one down below, is to add a, like a five minute for the opportunity for the people who attend down below in case they do have, I mean, questions about stuff on the agenda after we talk about something. I guess Scott said that has to be, when I asked him about that, to move it down before this meeting, he said that has to be a council decision.
Oh, to change the order of...
Yes, yep, when I talked to him and, yeah, and he said that had to be a council decision. So that was one of mine, I guess that's one that I would like to do. And then the other one, is there any way that before the next meeting, when we talk about budgeting, can we get everything like in a spreadsheet so we know like, I guess how much we're sending or what everybody would like to be sending or...
Which should be given.
Yeah.
That was in that package.
Okay.
Close to it.
I mean, okay.
What they want.
I know, I guess, I didn't know if you guys talked about like if you guys were wanting to take anything out or I guess we've never really talked about that.
We haven't discussed that.
And that, and that has to be done.
They just presented their, all the individual entities presented.
And then do we have to have any public hearings before any of that? And that has to be done all before?
Public.
In April, okay. That was very much.
No, we never went over, we just looked at, we didn't go over and say we need to cut this or we got to cut this.
Well, in the past we did it through the month, so instead of... So.
Kelly's still working on some quotes, I know, of things for streets and such to make sure we have the right amount going forward.
We still need to do a workshop then, too.
Yep.
We probably will, it might be easier to do that through...
We tabled that with them.
Oh, that workshop, yes, the property workshop.
Things in town.
And then as for the opportunity, I think didn't you or someone asked, it was at the end and then everybody said they wanted the people to not wait during our whole meeting to talk, so then they moved it to the front. I'm pretty sure it just got moved up in last year or something.
See, that, that was never on the thing before.
No, it was never on there, no.
It just happened at the end, so now I wanted to put it in front of it.
I don't know, I, that's just, I, it has to be a, or we have, or have one of, you know, you know, opportunity at the beginning and maybe in, or it's up to you, but I, Scott said it had to be a council approval, so.
Well, I thought it should be, just so everybody's in agreement, but that, that way everybody knows what, what one person... It's always an idea. No, it's a good idea.
So would you like to...
Except for press asking questions. It's, it's for...
That's right, it's for customers, for residences.
So are we going to do it in two places then?
I do not recommend that.
No, I, I...
I just wait to the end.
So we're going to make it wait to the end?
Okay, that's fine with me.
Okay.
Next, the council comments.
Probably right before or something.
Sounds good.
Did we ever get the replacement for that sign for the property over there that somebody stole?
No, I would have to double check.
Can, can we grab that one from the, and put it over here?
Yeah.
If we can.
Well, if it's... The ground, I mean, depends what the ground's like.
They got, they got a skid loader, they can pull it out. But, you know, somebody asked me that about the land, it's not really advertised. I said, well, there's two different, there's a couple reasons why we're not advertising.
Is that one couple that bought that other car, are they supposed to be building here?
Yeah.
This summer, yeah.
They're, they're already, they moved it down and getting a rental, so there's just...
Cause they have two years, right, and it's only the main year that they took over here.
Yeah, that was...
But it started down from the five, the same amount.
Yeah, they got two years.
Right, so we have two years already going, this is...
The one in Walling's got three years, right?
Right.
And that, this, they're third year.
Yes, and they got...
So there's...
They were all ten to two as far as I know.
Okay, I just didn't know when that one, I thought, I thought this was going on two years, but maybe that...
I think it was last month.
Yeah, this is last...
Okay, so it's going to be good to be in year.
Construction up there this year or have it finished?
It's started by next year.
Do they have to have it started again?
I thought they had to have it started, I had to double check, but it's not sure if it's started.
It's got to be occupied.
Really?
I think, I'm pretty sure you look at the thing, it's got to be occupied.
What's once has come now.
Oh, really? I thought it's, no, it's occupied by the two years.
That's something to look at, to check out for both of them, make sure we're... Yeah. Everybody's on the right page.
Like I said, Maple Street, when that all happens, we just need to give a couple of tickets and everybody will just get on the phone and tell everybody else and I think that'll...
That'll help too.
So, awesome.
I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
Motion by Lexi.
I'll second.
Jean, if you're here in tonight's meeting, do we have any correction, rejection of that? If you see that's in, otherwise all in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Meeting adjourned six thirty-nine p.m., one hour, not fast. So Scott? Scott?